My computer says six o'clock. There's six o'clock, so everybody can know that Aaron will have to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before the meeting gets going tonight, we've got a sparse crowd, but Morgan Core, K O H R, is that how you say your name?
Yes.
She is new to the position that Elizabeth used to do, which is our social media specialist. And I think you have a, I read that you have a degree in that or?
In organizational communication.
Organizational communication, good.
And alumni.
Oh, and alumni.
I always doubt that when we get it, so.
But anyway, welcome, and I guess you'll be attending the board meetings from now on?
Yes.
You get, you get a hazard pay. Just set it up with him. So anyway, well, welcome and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion to approve and adopt the agenda, please.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion second, I got Beth seconding. Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? I heard six zero. Board report.
Welcome to the July edition of the Missouri School Boards Association Board Report. We begin with a look at MSBA's Summer Summit held in Brandon, June 16th and 17th. The summit began with an inspiring keynote presentation from Dr. Jacqueline Zandt. Dr. Jackie is an accomplished school principal who has become famous for her straightforward, why not attitude, which has led to dramatic improvements in some of Southern California's most under-resourced schools. Her passion for guiding young people has garnered national recognition. Dr. Jackie said that in addition to the first four Cs, community, collaboration, capacity, and connection, there is one more C that is critical to student success.
You have to be creative. You have to be innovative. You have to be different. You have to think about how do we recreate what we've done to make something fresh and new happen, because we are serving scholars who are innovative, they were born into innovation. They don't even know what we did. They don't think the way we did. They're gonna have jobs that have not even been created yet. So we cannot afford to use old tactics on innovative youngsters. Not only that, innovative young people who are working around with us. We have to be brave enough to say, we gotta do something different. Because if we're not creative, we're gonna lose the first four Cs.
The Summer Summit also featured an awards luncheon, recognizing outstanding students such as the 2023 statewide Belcher Scholarship winner, Jontal Agbafun of Republic High School. The luncheon was also an opportunity to celebrate board members who have achieved additional levels of board certification beyond the basic state requirement levels and have achieved the designation of Advanced Master or Distinguished Certified Board Member. At the conclusion of the summit during the delegate assembly, Ruth Johnson of the Raymore Peculiar School District was sworn in as President of the Missouri School Boards Association after serving as President-elect for the past year. She told board members attending the summit, it's important to understand the challenges our schools face right now, but it's also important to celebrate accomplishments.
As we look ahead into this next year, we will face many of the same challenges that we've had in recent times. We must however, look forward, be better, and focus on our why.
MSBA state officers elected during the delegate assembly meeting held at the summit include President-elect Patty Questonberry of the Ozark R6 School District and Vice President Jonathan Russell of the Neosho School District. As the summit concluded, Senator Carla Essling delivered a resolution originating from the Senate floor, recognizing the outstanding contributions of outgoing MSBA President Ray Murphy.
Every once in a while, you, you have an opportunity to recognize leadership and to recognize people's contribution and just the giving nature of time and resource and energy for something that obviously you're not paid for, but because it matters to the heart and it matters to the children in his district and across the state. And I want to say thank you so much for your leadership.
MSBA's positions on state and federal education issues are determined by the delegate assembly that will be meeting this coming November. If your school board has a position statement on an issue you would like to submit to the advocacy committee for consideration, you can do so this summer. The advocacy committee reviews those proposals and makes recommendations to the delegate assembly that determines MSBA's positions on issues. Those position statements express to legislators, policymakers, the public, and the media where MSBA stands on issues affecting public schools. Be part of the process by reviewing the current positions, discussing them with your fellow school board members, and proposing changes. Delegates will vote on proposed changes at the fall delegate assembly this November in Kansas City. Registration will be open starting July 10th for the 2023 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators and the Missouri Association of School Business Officials to be held November 2nd through the 4th in Kansas City. The event will once again feature numerous breakout sessions and workshops, many presented by school leaders from districts throughout the state, along with a lineup of general session speakers you won't want to miss. That's it for this one. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in August for the next MSBA Board Report.
Hi, did y'all see Mary in there?
I saw her twice.
You saw Mary twice?
I saw you in there too.
So y'all paid attention? In all, in more serious?
Did everyone get a thank you letter from the, or did it just, did it just come to me?
I got, what's?
Thank you letter from the food pantry?
Yes.
For our donation?
I did not get one from the food pantry.
Okay, well, I, I did get one. Just briefly, just, we deeply appreciate your donation. That was from the staff.
Yeah.
For board recognition. So that's pretty fully one of Dennis, and tell us about the food pantry.
So do you want to give that to Elizabeth and she'll get it entered into the record?
I will, pass it down. Pass it down.
Okay, does anybody want to add anything to the board report? Megan, since you're the only one here, did anybody sign up for public comments out there? She doesn't even know what you're talking about.
No.
You get assigned a job quickly.
And Megan, Morgan.
I'll answer to it.
Mr. President, I did that for the first six months I knew her, right? Megan Morgan is where I just defaulted to that.
Probably, you know.
Sorry, Morgan.
No, you're totally fine.
So Sarah, did you want to speak in public comments?
Sure, is that now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So which, which agenda item do you want to speak to?
Oh, I don't have an agenda item. Do I have an agenda item?
Well, you should, but go ahead quickly.
I just wanted to, I guess, talk about trauma and our response to trauma and ACEs, adverse childhood experiences, and the districts, I was curious, more information on the district's policies on trauma and how we handle children who have lived through trauma and our understanding of trauma and, yeah, I think that's really mostly it. Just that trauma doesn't have to be a big, living through 9/11, a ground floor trauma. Trauma could be any adverse childhood experience, and that doesn't have to be, you know, what we would expect. And everyone's trauma response is different, and I just urge the board to look into childhood trauma more in general and curious how we as a school and school board handle trauma in general. So I guess I'll stop talking now.
So that was made to the continuous school board report?
Yeah. Probably.
And Mr. President, if I may, and I'm not answering Sarah's question, just, Sarah and I have an appointment next, next week, so maybe there's something that, that we'll glean from that that I might want to put in a board memo or something, or perhaps not the day, so.
And the difference in SEL, social emotional learning, and PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention, and I don't know what S stands for, if we've ever looked at that difference as a school or looked into PBIS implementation out here, or what, not?
So you, you should talk to Don Hickman and, and Matt Crowe. And they're not here tonight, but the principals at the?
Oh, yes.
East and, and?
Yes.
West Elementary. I would talk to them, but they're, they're real familiar with it, so I would talk to them, and talk to him, okay?
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
All right, next item on the agenda is the exit survey. So Dr. Berger, I'm gonna let you lead this conversation.
I apologize, I, okay, I can do that. Would you, or? Actually, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw it to Dr. Way, I don't think either one of us were necessarily prepared, I know you wanted to go through some specific questions.
No, the, well, the specific questions was on the board self-evaluation.
Okay.
So, but let's go through it, okay, I'll lead it, that's fine.
Well, maybe, maybe Dr. Way, I apologize.
Are we doing exit survey?
Exit survey?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think I was, I think I jumped the gun. Let me throw it to Dr. Way, he is prepared.
Yes.
Dr. Berger is not, Dr. Way is.
Hey, Elizabeth?
Yeah.
Which one? Not that one, can you call the other one?
So I had it there. I messed up my agenda, we'll just open this one.
Yeah, awesome. Okay, so last July, we were talking last July here, and I remember, you know, one of Austin's things is, hey, what are you getting out of the survey? You know, what, what did you see? What's good, what's bad? And so if you go back to last year's survey, I'm gonna start there, we had 22 out of our 29 complete the survey. And we give the survey to all of our certified folks, that's teachers, counselors, admin. And so last year, what we needed to work on was communication, evaluation process, and the one that killed me last year is the last question on here, it says, would you recommend WC to someone seeking employment? And that's where we were low, and that was one that, that bothered me the most out of the survey last year. And so if we go to the survey this year, so just keep those in mind, those were our areas where we needed to see some improvement. I want to go to the question, why are you leaving the district? It's one of the first questions.
Whatever, Dr. Way?
Four. Back up.
Go on, one. Okay, and so last year, when it talks about perception of unfair treatment, we had 18%, 18.2% say that was big. This year, you can see there's 5%, there's one comment on that. If you go to the next question where it talks about job itself, we had 9.1 think that the job itself was a major issue. We had 0% this year. Going to the next one where it talks about supervisors, we had 13.6 think it was a major issue last year, and we had 4.5 this year. Professional development, last year we were at 13.6, this year we're at 0% when it talks about major issue. Now, going to policy, this is one where we scored worse this year, if you go to policies. Last year, where it was somewhat of an issue, we were at 22.7%. This year, we're at 31%, so we're up almost 9% on policies. So we did worse than that.
Do we know which specific policies?
We do not. We, there wasn't much you can get from the comments on that. But we're gonna talk about that at the end, though. I'm just kinda going through this real quick. If you go to the next one, it talks about working conditions, we had only 4.5% say it was a major issue last year, we had 9.1. So we got worse than working conditions. In pay?
Time out, you went from one person to two persons, last year it was one person, this year it was two people.
Yep. So last year we had 22 responses, and then this year we had 22 responses. So I know one, that's what I'm saying, when you have that small of a size, a sample size, one or two can make a huge percentage difference. So last year on pay, we had 0% say that it was a major issue. This year we had 9.1 say that. If you look at benefits?
So go back to pay.
Okay.
So if you took last year, somewhat of an issue plus major issue, do you have that number from last year?
Somewhat of an issue last year was 27.3, and this year it's 45%.
Yeah, so to me, the fact that somewhat, somewhat of an issue plus the major, if you combine both those together, then that tells me we did worse. Because I would be more looking at the sum of somewhat of an issue plus major issue than just major issue.
Yeah.
I mean, in terms of, did, did something go better or worse?
Yeah. Going down to benefits, somewhat of an issue, we're at 9% last year, this year we're at 27%. If you go to the next one, Elizabeth, when we talk about recognition, we were at 13% last year said it was a major issue, 4.5 this year. Communication, communication, major issue last year was 31.8%, and if you look, major issue in communication this year is 9.1. I believe that no matter what year we go through, communication is always gonna be a big one, you know? But it was lower this year than last year quite a bit.
If you look at coworkers, are there somewhat of an issue from last year to this year?
I don't have that, I'll get that one for you. Yeah. Where was that? Communication? Coworkers. Hey, coworkers, last year, major issue was zero, this year 9.1 coworkers. Coming to the end here, we've got materials. This one was weird for me, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see this one coming. It said, we were 4.5% said it was a major issue, this year 14.3% talking about materials. When you talk about evaluation process, if you remember, that's something that we worked with our aspiring admin, revamped our evaluation system. Last year, major issue was 18.2%, we were at 4.5 this year with evaluation process. Central office support, we had a major issue of 13% last year, we had zero this year. When you come to the last one, that pie chart, if you remember, this is the one that bothered me last year, if people recommend us for maybe or yes, we were at 77.3% last year, we're actually up 9%, we're at 86.3. I think ideally, if you're leaving us and nine out of 10 people, I'd like to be at that 90%, if nine out of 10 said, hey, I would still recommend working here, I think that would be ideal. But if you look at this year overall, a lot of it that we tried to improve upon, we did. The things that we got better at were PD, recognition, communication, evaluation process, CO support, things that we did worse on this year, and they kind of all go together. Policies, working conditions, pay, coworkers, and materials. It's more from the outside stuff, more to the internal, what affects me the most. And so it was very, and again, we had about 22 responses, we had 22 responses last year, we had the same ones this year. We had 22 out of 29 last year respond, and we had 22 out of 25 respond this year. And again, sometimes it gets harder for people, or people don't feel comfortable doing it. You know, we had a change in personnel, usually like Amy would head that up in, in March or April, and so we start sending out emails, and then when we don't get responses, then usually I step in, so Elizabeth helped me with that this year. And we ended up having three, sometimes people don't feel comfortable putting on paper, and so they'll meet with me, and we had three people choose to meet with me this year, and, and so we put down all their results as well. So I think overall, the things that we worked on or wanted to work on, we improved upon, but obviously our charge for next year are some of these things where it talks about pay, working conditions, policies, and I don't have an answer for you on the policies, you know? I don't, I don't know if that goes with pay and benefits and all that kind of stuff, if that's what they're thinking, and I'll try to dive into that, but I didn't see much of that in the comments.
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Way?
How much did the yes go up to this pie chart? From last year?
Yes, last year was 36.4, this year it's 63.6.
Just out of curiosity, so I'm? Never mind, these are not on the surveys, aren't they, unless they meet with you? Okay. I just, would really like to, for the people that say no, you're not representing right city, it would be really nice to know their, their reasoning is why, so we can see if there is a common theme there, or trends, and something else we could work on, but I know it's difficult to determine permission.
And, I mean, I, I don't wanna, obviously I want it to be 90%, but that's four people.
Yes.
So if we non-renewed, six people, or four people, or two people, I can't remember the number right now, it would be expected. So, I mean, yes, I want to work on the things that we need to work on, but four people.
Overall, I mean, I think this is one of, amazing takeaway to the district, to go from 30-something percent to 67% yes, I think that is very amazing growth over 12 months in regards to recommending the district. Anything else? Okay. That was just information, so next one is high school and East addition updates. Dr. Berger?
And my apologies for being out of sync on the agenda, I thought we were jumping to the board self-evaluation, but I am on, on, on target now, so we'll start out with Eric Wilson for the full room ad out of East, even though I'm not in sync with Elizabeth.
I'm just hiding today, so.
Ah, summer break, don't worry about it.
We're not.
Just open it again.
There we go.
Okay, so just a quick update, we were on site last week for the construction meeting. Windows are in, the stone sills are in that were, they're finally stained, so they match the existing ones. Flooring's going in, painting is also going on. The, I think the rough grading has started on site, so knocking down some of the ruts and the mud from, from construction. Let's go to the next thing, these are just some of the things. So this is the stone sill we were talking about, the existing sills were not matchable with the material, so we ended up having a stain come in after the sills were installed to make them match exactly to the existing ones, so it turned out really well. Couple of inside photos. They are on track, we are gonna be, we have a meeting next week, just so you guys know the process, to start establishing dates for a punch list for, for myself and our engineers to come out when they, contractor teams that they're ready for us. And we'll go through our set and make a punch list and do recommendations for things that need to be addressed, you know, fixed up, cleaned up, finished, whatever it might be. It's usually a multiple-page document with graphics, photos, and verbiage that we'll give to both the contractor and the district so that they know what needs to be finished, whether that happens right before school, you know, starts, or if something lingers that's not forgotten about. They say they're on track still, but it is coming down to crunch time, as you guys all know, so we'll get another update to you guys soon, we'll be talking more with Chris and Jeremy as we get through this, and start setting up dates for move-in also, when furniture can start being set up and teachers can set up classrooms.
So what date are we tracking to right now?
It's the week before, it gets like right around 15.
August 15?
August 15.
Is that enough time for furniture to get moved in, teachers to get?
He'll be cheating it, he'll be cheating it, but yes, I think we're in stage, so in the building and then, yeah.
Yeah, we, we'd like to do our punch before we move furniture in, but sometimes they overlap, we just have to be careful. This, this one is not as concerning because there's not a lot of drywall to ding or scrape up, but it'll, it'll be around that date.
Yeah, the 15th on a Tuesday, so it's probably the week of the 14th maybe there, if that's SC or what we're projecting at.
That's why I was asking earlier about the school start date, but middle of August.
First day of school is 21st.
So that's six days.
It's four rooms. It's not a lot, no.
I just?
Unless we know.
Kyle, don't worry about it, they'll get it. All right, any other questions, before I ask my question? So we had, you know, we got caught with a change control because we didn't have actual documents, remember that? So are we gonna get actual documents with this one? Because I, because I can foresee us, you know, having to do another addition here pretty quickly, so.
Yeah, so yes, our plan on any project we do is to get markups from the contractor. We update, we update as we go, but we update anything that's on those that we don't have in our, in our model, and recreate PDF and CAD drawings that we'll provide on thumb drives to the district.
So then that, we want to do the next project there, we'll have, you know, make the bid go better, and we won't, shouldn't miss, like electric not being there.
Yeah.
That's my question.
It should cover everything that, that we're aware of. You know, we're not on site every day, so if we do something we don't see, but it should all be there. And they really haven't moved much in the process, it's all a con in place, we had a couple walls that moved slightly, but after things where it's supposed to be.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, high school.
Yeah, where, Nathan Bibb pinch hitting for Bobby Christopher and I, so welcome Nathan.
Thanks for having me. Saying as much as pulling it up early, just want to say thank you guys for not just your time that you spend in dedicating to represent your residents, but invite us to speak. We do a lot of public work, and there's a lot of times where the boards don't really get an update, like see the things that are happening, I know you drive by, but to actually hear and see and understand what's happening is really cool. Your school is your cousin's school. So high school, it's, it's somewhat boring from a, a drive-by scenario for a while. We've kind of listed out what we've had going in June and July, you'll see grading and excavating on there for quite a while still, site utilities, the same. Footing and foundations is progressing really well, we're about 80% complete there. Site concrete's moving from the west to the east, which majority of the project sites are kind of doing, and then our underground NEP, they're working in like Area A, Area B, the plumber are kind of away from each other, and then they're flip-flopping around each other, so we've coordinated to keep them outside of each other's space. The, you can go ahead and flip to the next one. So retaining walls, I think, is on both, both slides, the, the wall down Fast Lane is pretty much complete, they're sort of working around where the detention basin is. The wall across the street at Cotner's property, it's complete, they should do the finished grating, seating it, sodding it, I'm not sure actually which kind of landscaping it gets. Most exciting things, I mean, some steel's bent up, but it's usually when things really start to take shape, is when you can see it vertically. We're working to pour the casting slabs next week, which then after they cure, we'll, we'll pour the tilt-up slabs, and then you'll see those walls start to go up, and then steel will follow it. Masonry's started, it's all below grade at this time, and we'll backfill it to start going vertical there too. And then, so if you flip forward. This view is from the east looking west, so baseball fields looking back towards the football fields, and then the top is kind of over on the far west side, looking at that A area. And then that's the two photos of retaining all down Fast Lane, and that's before it was finished, but the cotton property's finished now. Here's the slab prep and the rough ends for where the storm shelter is. That's just a bigger overview. Some of the below-grade masonry on the Area A. Side pipes sticking up, looks like a plastic farm field, right? So here you can see a little bit better of, of A and all the footings complete, and then how it's progressed down through the B area.
Just if you can, I may take Eric's assistance, can you just, that's a pretty cool view, can you tell us what those are, just reorientate the board on those?
Sure. So this is Area A, which is, this side is kind of the admin space, and this side's counseling. And then you move forward over here into Section B, which is classrooms, libraries down here, and then this wraps around that kind of U-shaped continuous loop for classrooms and wing.
And that area in the second figure, is that the library there then, that one?
Yeah, this is the library, this is the main library portion, and this is kind of a couple classrooms and the cafe, coffee.
Yeah.
I don't know what it's gonna end up being named for sure.
Well, I, what is the name, Dr. Jeremy, because I saw the name that I didn't? Well, I, what is the name, uh, Dr. Jeremy, because I saw the name that I didn't know, like it's?
Cafe.
Cafe, I didn't know that, so I learned that even this week, that's our, our cafe that's, uh, that's at Oxen's, so we're proud of that program. We've actually, you know, accommodated this building for that program, which is really cool, it's a neat little custom thing. Does the following picture show the caf- cafeteria? No, it doesn't, but of course you go back and the other highlight would be in the, in the roof to match to the library, the front entrance cafeteria. It's pretty, obviously it's not done yet, so I'll actually get you to. I'm gonna quit talking, sorry about that, Nathan.
Oh, you're fine, so that's just the north west view from our altar. And that's, it's really same, about the same, north west, it is kinda looking north. And then another view going west.
Yeah, that may be the cafeteria in there, right? Spray it with footprint, the cafetoriums are on the back end there.
Um, at the bottom.
Yeah.
And then just samples of the three week schedules that we hand out to keep all our subcontractors on pace with the various areas that we're sort of working on through.
Hey, anybody have a question tonight? Kyle?
Two. How's our favorite bat study going?
We haven't seen any update, um, the, uh, core has given us a rough, or the consultant that's working with core has given us a rough, um, timeframe, um, but that's not, hasn't hit yet, so we're, don't have any updates on it, um, other than what we said last time is the bats that were found were not endangered.
Any concerns that have changed from last month on that, or Mary?
We're anxious to have the report back, but that's.
And then, um, uh, last question, when do we expect grading to be completed on the, the project?
Fully complete?
At least?
Or all the rough grading?
All the rough grading primarily by our corner that has had issues over the last month.
That should wrap up before really winter sets in.
I do have a guess, uh, it, things to start, start to get touchy, I honestly don't know the finite specifics of whether or not we may put some temp seed down or, or exactly what we plan on doing landscaping, but it's, that always becomes the trick. Sometimes we try to divide sites up and maybe you do it in the spring and you leave some other areas there and do your finish period and head to the rest of the landscaping in the fall. We're always very cautious between the hotter months to put anything down, if it ends up not taking, it's really, you end up with straw and it makes things worse. Then it starts to clog with the storm drains and then it's over.
Thank you, but any other questions?
I think you've got many questions.
Mary?
No, I have.
David? Uh, the picture of the retaining wall, one of the very first ones, Elizabeth. Right there. What is to go west of the end of that retaining wall on the right hand, on the right-hand photo? Where the, where the Alexis Estates sign is?
It's, it's just landscape.
Just landscape, so would you, is that done then, is that done being graded there?
I, I would say no.
You would say no? So my, I guess my question is, when that's finished, I assume we won't have the water issues that we've had before, correct? Or not?
The, the, once the everything graded and the water that's coming off right now is from bigger parts of the site, that'll be going into the inlets into the retention pond and it'll slowly let, be let out into the, the drainage system.
So if we get another five inch rain tomorrow, we could have the same problem that we've had in the past?
As far as I know, the slip has been reinforced and put back to hold it, but.
Anything's possible, I guess, right? I didn't know when the timeline for that was to be done to where we wouldn't have to worry about the water and the mess with the neighbors kind of.
I think kinda what Nathan says is that September, October date is when they'll start getting seed and final grading finished out to where that stuff should all be directed where it's supposed to go. Um, and the only thing coming off of that hill would be what lands on it.
And I'll add maybe, uh, and Nathan, if I was to speak here, you can report it to Bobby and then I'll have to write a board memo, but the infrastructure for the, um, the, the runoff there is projected in the first week of August, to be, to be completely installed and operational. I know what you're talking about, you know, obviously you're gonna have additional runoff if you don't have, uh, grass, you know, taken there. But in terms of the operation of the system, the first week of August, does that sound right to you?
That sounds right.
Okay.
Oh, really, so that's close then?
That's close, yeah, 'cause that's certainly something I was kinda drilling down on at a recent progress meeting was, hey, when, you know, when, when is it no longer, it's incomplete? You know, it's, and, and, uh, as, uh, informed the board, that was, you know, that retaining wall being partially done was, actually made the problem even worse, you know? So it was just, it was a timing issue, so, uh, that's my understanding and, and of course, I, I, I completely understand what Eric's saying too is, you're, it's still not complete complete, 'cause whenever I first asked that, they're like, well, you know, that's, uh, twenty-four, but I was more concerned about that corner, 'cause that's where the issue is, so. I'll say first week of August unless you get a memo that says I misspoke. And Nathan will, I'm sure Bobby will, uh, send that to me quickly as soon as he's back from vacation.
And I do have one more question, on the, the far east side of the property, I think Nathan, you mentioned there's still some grading going on there?
Yeah, the baseball field.
How much of that property then is going to be graded or used? And I guess what I'm getting at is, I, I drove past it today, I mean, it's grown up, you know, does the district need to pay to have that brush hogged? You know, 'cause we don't wanna grow up in brush, you know, we'd like to keep it, or I think we should keep it knocked down and looking somewhat decent, you know? What's the, what's the plan for all the way to Highway F on that property?
I don't know the exact limits of disturbance, but I do know we have dirt that we need to move from the west to the east, but we, we need the bat study done to be able to start moving some of that. So I would guess anything that looks like it needs to be brush hogged is probably gets raised or covered in dirt.
Even all the way to Highway F?
I, I would bet there's fifty percent of that between the creek and Highway F that's not getting graded. If I, just.
And in fact, we've raised for the baseball softball.
Yes, the softball field definitely and the road, that roadway, but there's a big chunk in between F and the baseball complex that I don't think is getting touched much, but I'm not the grading contractors, I don't know if they're moving soils up there at all.
I, I can't recall, right at F, memory serves me right, I thought that it was really just never wanting to enter entrance off of that.
There you go.
But I don't know down F, how much gets disturbed right along that area. The more I know, the, the further west you get, the more, more disturbance that there was.
Sure.
Yeah.
And not to what Mr. Mike is, is asking, and it may be a, a good, uh, time to, uh, point this out. So whenever, you're talking about critical path and we're talking about the bat study that potentially could hold things up, what Nathan just mentioned, I think it was Nathan, uh, is exactly the issue. They got material, they have spoils on the east side of the property that they, they need to get to the west side of the property to raise the softball field. And as you've got, as, as the contractor has to start wrestling and, and moving around those spoils, especially if they have to move them twice, that's, you know, I guess I'm saying critical path, but maybe a little bit loosely, but that's, that's, that's the, the concern. And, uh, uh, so the, the sooner, you know, we, we know it, we're aware of it, the sooner we get this bat, bat study and conditional use permit, uh, it's gonna be, you know, the cloud breaks there, we, we feel better about that portion of the project.
You said we're taking dirt from the east and taking it west?
Uh, I had it backwards.
Going west to east?
Yeah, west to east, yeah.
Uh, I apologize for not driving out there today to look, but, um, I understand there's some big rock has been hauled in, uh, close to Fast Lane?
Uh, riprap in there, there is some temporary riprap in there.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to know, is that temporary or is that?
Let me let these guys, uh, address it.
There's some that is on the plans for the project, so it could be some temporary and some that's, that stays.
Well, I, I guess the question is, it's, it's there where, where the slip lane's supposed to go? The question is, will that be there permanently when the slip lane goes in, or are you gonna rip it back up when we put the slip lane in there? I think that's the question Mary's getting at.
Yeah, I'm guessing that it gets moved.
Yeah, let me follow up on it specifically, I believe at Thursday's, last Thursday's progress meeting, Dr. Way, I don't know if you recall that, I thought that, and you're talking about there in front of the Cottner property?
Yes.
That is temporary, uh, but I, I will absolutely follow up with that if it is not correct and clarify that, but. Because of the slip lane goes in there, I know that's what, uh, Greg, uh, was talking about.
Beth, any questions?
No.
So the only suggestion I, I would make for Bobby next month is, the bat question comes up every month, you might as well just ask live. Say bat question and then, then give us, give us the update, that way we can just save you a question.
And, uh, Mr. Jones, if I may, uh, thank you, Wright Construction for sending us, uh, updated, uh, drone footage, did we get that up?
Yeah, I saw the look.
So it's really, really cool and as it develops, uh, so get online under our props tab, hit that, uh, really cool back behind the football field, 'cause you can start seeing that take shape and there is a, what I think is gonna be an incredible looking spillway that kinda goes into the creek there. And then the woods behind that, one, one little aha from a recent site visit I made was, um, they were explaining to me that a lot of that timber stays between the baseball softball field and the football field, which I think is a great thing. And it's gonna provide a real pretty background there, it's gonna, it's, but, so whenever you get on the drone footage, look at that spillway, it'll get you excited.
Thank you, David.
Thank you very much, I say. Okay, um, next item on the agenda is the facilities and grounds program evaluation, um, assuming Dr. Way is upping into this one?
Sure. Yeah, uh, Elizabeth, we can just go to that number one there, so everything highlighted in yellow, I guess I'm gonna go over it tonight, but the first one it talks about, what our objective is to maintain increased, you know, utility efficiency. And as you know, we did a lot of LED projects at West Middle School and High School the past couple of years. We're still working on that at East, as ballisters go bad, we are putting in LED there, so that's an ongoing thing. We are also adding LED lighting at the bus garage, we did some in the spring, when we did some, uh, fencing and we're gonna continue to do that and we should be done in the summer here. Um, you know, we talked, I think at the last board meeting about cooling tower, closed loop at middle school, so that is in the work for fall if we can get, if all the stars can align and we can get, uh, materials and stuff, so we're excited about that. At West Elementary, we've been working on flush valves, changing those to automatic and we should have those completed before school starts. Um, you know, rebuilding Boilin' Number One, the middle school's been a project, um, and then I kinda wanna brag on Brian Kahoon, he's our maintenance and, uh, custodial supervisor. We've been playing this game the last year where something will come up and we're like, how much does that cost? And so neither one of us are right anymore, it seems like, but you know, if I think it's five thousand, it ends up being eight thousand and he says four thousand. And so one of the, during our conversation, we meet all the time, one of the things that just kept going up and up was trash bags. And I know it's, it, it sounds stupid to me even talking about it, but it's one of those things where every time we order them, we use a lot of them and they keep going up, we're doubling in price. And so one of the things Brian's good about is, uh, you know, how can we save money, can we do stuff better? And so we were using a pretty heavy, a one point six mil bag, and I know I'm going in weeds here, but we did a little study on that, like, hey, can we go less quality of a bag and still not have any blowouts and stuff? And so, you know, he, he went down to like a point eight and so that seems to be a good bag for us, we're saving two thousand dollars. He did something like that over at East Elementary, the way we were polishing the concrete. We were doing kind of a big deal in the summer and it was taking about two weeks of labor and we had one custodial over there in the summer. And so we've tried to make it part of our normal cleaning every month, came up with some new chemicals, had an expert come in, and that's saving us about four thousand dollars. So Brian does a lot of those good kinda added value things, that he looks at things and see how we can improve them. And so those are a couple of things that came up with efficiency. If you go down to the second page, Elizabeth, where it talks about increasing our safety measures, you know, uh, additional LED lighting at West Elementary parking lot, um, on the north and west sides of the gym, we're trying to add some additional LED, it kinda gets dark in the back there. Security cameras at West Elementary, I wanna say we're two cameras from being fully.
We have the cameras, we're missing a couple mounts.
Yeah, we've got the cameras, we're missing two mounts, so everything else is in place and so we're helping to get better mounts and have that totally up and running there. Um, implementation of that Raptor emergency management system and drill requirement software. So through Molasbo, um, Raptor is doing this thing with all school districts where it's free service for us to have one of those, um, apps where we can instantly, um, alert everybody in the building across the district. And so we've been working on that for the last month, uh, we're trying to implement it, we have training with admin coming up at the end of the month and then we will train our staff in August and hopefully be up and ready for that. But that's kind of a, a big undertaking we've been doing this summer. Um, we're also adding additional matting to playgrounds at East and West and I also believe early childhood, just to give kids a little better access through some of those areas. Um, if you look at West, there's some fencing, uh, at West, right by the gym, we're trying to add a bollard there just to make sure it can get back there. Um, and then if you go behind West where that early childhood used to be and the gym, there's kinda some nicks or nooks and crannies back there and so we're doing some other stuff, we're putting a keypad door in there just to make it a little more secure back there. So some of those things are what we're working on for safety. If you go down the next page, uh, and you highlight the ones in yellow, uh, things that are ongoing, working on new high school east, old high school in CO, we are replacing five entry doors at West this summer, we just got word that the doors are in and maybe getting painted and so we're hoping July thirty-first is the install date, we'll see how that goes. Replacing fire alarms, we're probably a week or two away from them being totally tested and out of there with a new fire alarm. We did a roof scan, some tuck pointing and some drain, uh, repairs at East Elementary either this summer or the spring. Uh, Brian is working on the rebuild breaker panel at the high school, he completed that in the spring. And then we had an issue right after graduation, probably about a half hour after graduation where our lights just went out, everything got hot, we have no reason for that. And so we are trying to look at if it's a transformer or breaker and so we'll be working on that this summer before school starts. Um, we add some additional fencing at the bus, uh, pen, we also developed, uh, we're working on developing some additional parking at the bus garage. Um, and then you'll see some holes in our asphalt, all the buildings, we're trying to get some asphalt patching done, um, before school starts, it might be in the fall. But those are things that we're working on right now, uh, in the next couple of weeks. And then lastly, I always try to tell you, hey, we're in year three of our five-year facility plan, FY twenty-five, stuff we're getting ready for, for next summer, and as you can see on there, I already crossed out replacement of gutters at West. So last year we did the new roof, um, the insurance policy got the new roof over there, therefore we got new gutters, so there's no reason to buy new gutters. You know, there's things on there like adding or replacing athletic field lighting, adding additional parking at the high school. These are things that we came up with three or four years ago before we even knew we were gonna have a new high school. So when we get closer to that, we're gonna make decisions on, hey, are we using that money for that? I cannot see us doing that, are we gonna use it for some other things, maybe repaving stuff, adding some roofs or updating our roofs at middle school? Those kinda things, um, is what we're looking at for FY twenty-five. And so we'll be in year three of our five-year and so in another year or two, we'll have to go out and develop the next five-year facility plan.
Questions? Kyle?
Just one. Uh, for your safety measures section, um, I may be remembering incorrectly, did the governor sign some sort of grant this year regarding safety items?
We went for the grant, we did not get the grant. We did not get it, we did not score enough points, um, and so I'm not sure if that's coming out again, but.
It is.
It is coming back out again, so we go for the grant again, but.
I think it's fifty million, it's back out there and it's, I, I, as far as I know, it's undetermined whether it's, uh, al, you know, entitlement per ADA, which is what we were hoping for on the first round, or if it's competitive. I'm gonna, I'll lean that since it was competitive last time, it may go competitive again. But there is, there is another, I, I believe it's fifty million, uh, don't hold me to that, but out there again.
All righty.
Um, I just have a comment, you just kinda mentioned the new matting of the playgrounds and I've been a little bit involved with that and there's a lot of parents that are super excited that their kids that were unable to be out there with their friends are now going to be out there. So I appreciate the time you spent on that.
Mary?
Uh, one, maybe too much in the weeds, but I apologize, uh, it's a concern I have and it's, uh, just, uh, custodial services at the high school gym. Went to some events later on in the school year and just kinda embarrassed.
Yep, yep, I, I know from talking to Dr. Berger. So as, as you know, we've been a man down for over twelve months now there, um, and then we do have some new, so some of the events, um, we need to know about ahead of time and some of them are kinda sprung on us. And so if we know about it ahead of time, we seem to have a better, but yeah, uh, I'm, I'm, you're talking about the spring, late, late in the school year? Yeah, yeah, that was talked about and so, um, let me know how you feel about it this year. Yeah, yeah. That was talked about. And so, let me know how you feel about it this year.
We can do better. We can do better.
I know we can do better.
Absolutely.
Is there an opportunity to use, you know, part-time students in the high school for?
We've even, we've talked about that because there was, of course, there was a news article that came out where this has been a year ago, where a school district was doing that. We've talked about. You know, there's always liability concerns. There's concerns about kids, you know. So, it's not off the table. We'll let Dr. Way wrestle with that a little bit.
That one's a little tougher. The one we've been working on is with Echo Ride. So, we have some bus drivers or aides that work certain hours of the day. And so, we're just trying to get them in between or after the route's over. So, that's what we're working on with them. This is like anybody you can have. We would like to give them a tryout. So, we have eight and a half hour shift and we're like, even if we can only have it four hours, that's better than what we have right now. So, that's kind of our angle that we're working right now.
And Mr. Lewis, feel free to share anything, like you come across with media or something creative because everything's on the table, you know, and there's some things that, you know, whether I feel uncomfortable with it or the board or Dr. Way, but I think everything's on the table with this labor shortage because some of it is just not good work, but some of it is, we don't have people doing that job. And so, we're, you know, coming over from something else and asking somebody who's at another school to ready that. And sometimes they're willing and it's just all kind of, it's all kind of a mess. But everything's on the table. So, that's, that is a good one.
Some districts are going to teachers that have gone that route.
Yes, 5B, additional LED lighting to be installed in west and north sides of gym. Is that the high school gym?
Oh, sorry, at West. So, on the, on the west and north sides of that West Elementary gym, there's some dark areas there at night and there's some nooks and crannies. So, we're looking at that. It's where the early childhood used to be, the where it jets out in there. It kind of goes like this and there's just not a lot of, yeah.
I see. And then, so that got me thinking about the high school gym in the parking there. Am I right? Is there only one or two handicap parking spots there? Can, can something be done to improve that?
You want, you want some added to it?
I mean.
The front side of it?
I understand that you probably don't need very many handicap parking spots during the day at high school, for, for high school, but like your basketball games, they are full. You know, my dad's in a wheelchair. I know firsthand. If you don't get there whatever time early, you're not going to get a handicap parking spot. I don't know if you can set up something kind of temporary for basketball games and things like that because you won't, probably don't need them for school parking, right? You know, with a sign and a fat gallon bucket or something to maybe make some more of that handicap accessible.
Yeah, because we use those parking spots during the day, but like you said, just having something at night that, maybe even just doubling it from two to four or something.
Yeah, or, you know, I don't know if your parking spots are assigned, but maybe a student can park it during the day. It wouldn't matter. That's all I have.
Let's see. Yeah, it's, it's nice to see all of these things getting done. I know there's so much that goes into the maintenance of these buildings that we would never even think about, like the tuck pointing. So, it's, it's good to see all those things getting done. I see that asphalt patching is scheduled for summer, fall 2023. I think you were hoping that maybe there would be the opportunity to reallocate some funds to do some other parking lot work. I'm assuming that would be cool, like roof striding, right?
So, so right now in our current five-year, there is no money allocated towards parking lots. And so, when I look at that FY25, I see some opportunities because right here between middle school and CO, this parking lot would be our number one. But if you go around to the backside of middle school, you know, you can see some areas where it's not just a patch. It's a, you know, blow it out and start over some of those areas. And so, we're talking, you know, over 100,000 or so there. But like this, this front parking lot bothers me and there's some start at West and then there's some backside on the East Elementary. So, the different sections, yeah. So, I'm hoping if we have some money left over, we will, yeah, do just that.
Okay, gotcha. And I guess the, the number one thing that I've heard related to buildings or facilities would be the restrooms at West. And I'm assuming that's a discussion that will come to play when we work at our master plan later in the fall.
Yeah, so we did, I didn't put this on there, but we did some work with Hegeman in the spring. We were getting some backups. So, West is our biggest issue when it comes to bathrooms. Quite a bit of odd objects that go down there. And so, we have daily backups. And so, sometimes that backup ends up coming up behind the gym. And so, they did some work, probably about $2,000 or $3,000 worth of work Hegeman to kind of open up those lines down there. And so, yeah, we are, yeah, bathrooms at West are definitely. A lot of exploration.
These are all great questions. I think it would help the administration to, you know, you know, you have the opportunity to submit these questions beforehand so that we don't catch our administration off kilter or whatever. So, if you all could like email some, I mean, please ask them in open public. But, you know, the idea behind emailing some of these questions in is so that, you know, if Jeremy has to look, look something up beforehand, he's prepared to answer the question. I mean, fortunately tonight he had all, all the answers. Now, I'm going to break my own rule here in a second, but I digress. Yes, so, but anyway, seriously though, like, you know, some of those questions, if you email them in, then that way, then at least they have an opportunity to prepare. So, I had a patron or two talk to me the last week, last month about the middle school roof and said there was, I think I told you about this, that there was some potential wind damage on that. And I don't know what our plan is with that.
Yeah, so every big wind event, we always go up there and look. And so, you'll see, there's a couple of shingles and they're not the same color because that was the only ones we could get in. But we have a $1,000 deductible. And so, every time we call somebody and we're like, hey, is it a thousand or more? If it's not, it comes out of our money. So, a lot of times we're patching that. So, if you remember, we had a conversation about, we did the new shingles over the band hallway there and we did some kind of in the middle. And so, when we were just talking about money, we are trying to find a way to kind of break up those roofs into about six different pieces because every piece might be about 50,000 or 60,000. So, if we have extra money, you know, one of our first ones is going over the sixth grade wing over here because that seems to get hit the hardest. But then, you know, last year we did kind of those cutouts where all of our HVAC sit on those. And so, we have one of those cutouts that's about a 30,000 to 40,000 dollar bill. We did one of them. We haven't done the other one. So, that's another one. So, we're trying to piece it together. Otherwise, it's a half million, million dollar kind of.
But insurance, but insurance will cover that.
Right. Yeah, we've had them up there to see and we just, we just got one last year. So, it'd be hard to.
But to be sure, every time, and we have the conversation pretty frequently, and we, we obviously seen the drip edge and the shingles and actually, it was actually on central office here too because somebody got up there and fixed some of it and Dr. Way thought they might get hurt and we might have another claim. But we turned all those in. I mean, obviously, you know.
I mean, it happened to someone called it up to me, so I thought.
Oh, it's good.
All right, any other questions, any other questions on the facilities and grounds program? That's just an information report. Okay, next one. The first thing we're going to actually vote on tonight for a while. Continuous and school improvement plan.
Yeah, I'm really excited about this because it's been quite a journey on it. But, you know, some things that I think of as takeaways and then one thing I want to relay to the board is, you know, whether we do study groups or what other, other opportunities that we do to get public engagement, they're typically very small groups. Our number was about 50. And, you know, even though small groups, say if we have 12 for a study group, you'll see that erode maybe through the third or fourth meeting. And we might have, have that or, you know, it might be better than that, but that's not unusual to find. This CSEP stayed the course. I mean, we had great attendance for this and I want to thank the board members. I know Mr. Jones and, and Mr. Lewis. And I think Beth, Ms. Dean was in there too. So, appreciate that feedback from the board. And it does make it more difficult when you have that number. And, but I thought we managed it pretty well. And so, super proud because we have a lot of public engagement in on that process. The thing I want to say moving forward is this not as, not as live as the budget, but this is a living document. So, this will come back to the board. And we're kind of through our administrative kind of prep sessions prior to going into the school year. I've kind of got a schedule that I'm setting out for the admin team. But in terms of the CSEP and what the board would have their hands on, annually, this would go to the, to the CSEP committee. So, we reconvene those 50. And if they, you know, if it erodes down to 30, that might maybe, that may even be better, but be fine. And there would be just small course corrections in the action steps. Those goals are going to hang in there unless at some time it's just very clear that those are, you know, have been completely resolved. So, I could see that coming back with maybe no changes on a, on a year. But also, I could see the CSEP coming back to the board with recommended changes. And then about the fourth year, we're going to reconvene and kind of essentially blow it up. Now, I can predict to you that the academic performance is going to be on there. I don't know that those focus areas are going to change. College and career readiness, we'll see. That may be the one that maybe we can really get nailed down and consider institutionalized. Staff recruitment and retention, everything that we're reading says that that's not a five-year issue. It's a decade issue or more. But certainly, we've got, we've got to make a purpose on that and that's why it's a focus area. Community and culture and engagement, I think, was amplified with what we've seen happen in society the last four or five years. But I think that can hold. It's pretty, you know, common to see the CSEP. But point being, our, you know, our goals underneath that and our action steps, those can be pretty fluid. Then every fourth, fourth year going into that fifth year, we blow it up and kind of create again. So, assuming the board approves this tonight, you know, this gets us through our MSEP cycle, but this is not going to be the last time you see it. And we're trying to create a scorecard to come back and say to the board from a 30,000th of you, how are we doing on each one of those goals? So, it'd be a little more detailed than just look at the focus area on each one of those goals. How are we scoring on that? And of course, that's reflected all through our system. Remember, we're from the superintendent's evaluation to building leadership's evaluation to what we are doing with teachers, you know. So, just super excited about it. Perhaps with everything that school, public schools have been through in the last, I'll say, five years, everything from MSEP stalling, the, all the chaos at the State Board of Education with the governor, and then through a global pandemic, this has felt like it stalled out, you know. And it kind of, it's reminiscent from early in my career where we created a five-year plan that went on the shelf and you brought it back out in the fifth year and you checked on it, you know. This, that's not our intention moving forward. So, I apologize for the perhaps lengthy preamble, but I am super excited about this process and really appreciate everybody who had, had a part on it. And there's a lot of people that did.
Okay, so we made an adjustment or two last month.
We did.
Any other questions on this CSEP before we go ahead and approve it? Okay, I need a motion to approve the CSEP as presented.
Seconded.
There's a motion and second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? I heard 6-0. Okay, board self-evaluation. This is what I'm going to leave.
Yes. I mean, confuse us again or just me. I was a little confused. I apologize. Yes, thank you.
So, here's how we're going to do this, if everybody's okay with it. I went through and you all got an email. Basically, because of the questions I submitted, and I kind of picked out some questions that, that I thought we should talk about. And then after that, we'll just go down a row. If you might want to talk about any additional questions, then we'll do that. Fair enough? Okay, so Elizabeth, you want to go to question 12 first? And you can make that bigger so we can read it. I would, I would be.
You want the single year? Would you like to compare something?
I can just amend the one if you want. Let me see which time is this year and which was last year.
What's current? Look down. Maybe in your heading up there, maybe. Oh, yeah, I see it. 22.
Okay.
Well, it's current.
Okay, so this one, you can see, I don't know if it's because of the new, new board members or not, but, you know, you can see where it, we have more neither agree or disagree professional development. I don't know if that was just, and we had one person disagree this year. So, I don't know if, what the board is thinking on this question. I'll open the floor to discussion about who neither agreed nor disagreed or actually disagreed with this one.
I'll just say, I didn't, I didn't disagree with this one, but, you know, when I, when we took this, I've been on the board for three months, so there were some areas that I could go ahead and agree. Yes, I agree that takes place. And then others where I did put neither agree or disagree, of course, because I just needed more time to observe or walk through a particular process.
And that's a fair, that's a fair assessment. I appreciate that. And hopefully, you know, what I'm hoping to walk away with from here is that what do you need in order to move yourself from either a disagree or neither agree or disagree to an agree? So.
And if I may, Mr. President, that can be publicly or follow up with me or Mr. Jones, you know. So, it is, you know, certainly you can air that tonight and discuss it thoroughly or, you know, if that's something that's just a little bit uncomfortable, like all surveys, we pick that up.
I mean, you can see like, for instance, the email that Chris sent us, he actually, you know, you know, put comments on some of the stuff where I had said, where I said cite me an example and Doug Smith said, well, here's the example. So, you know, because I had disagreed, you know, I was bored. By the way, on the, on the questionnaire, when you see the questions, are the comments that were out there, I was board member number two. So, just, I thought I even wanted to. I, again, I don't care if you know what I said or didn't say, which is fine. So, you know, the question here is, so, you know, now's your time to speak up. If you neither agreed nor disagreed or you disagreed with this, what do you need to see in order to, you know, bring yourself into an agreement?
Yeah, Austin, I'm obviously the other agreeing number two. And I completely agree with what, I did what Beth said she did too. And some of these I chose neither agree nor disagree. I'm going to be very frank. I don't remember which one I picked for this one, so I apologize. However, I would like an example of what we've done in the past that would drive an agree from a board member for this question.
And I will chime in here, and I'm going to try not to chime in to every one of them because I know the board is not looking for rebuttal on each one. I think what you're doing is giving a stem. Hey, do you need more support? We rock to the next one. But I will, as, as I believe the board or maybe individual board members know, I have a problem with this question. I just do and I have had four years.
It sounds weird.
When this came up in MSEP III, I did not know that this was truly in the board's purview to be choosing the professional development. And so, I've, I've talked to MSBA, well, that, we're talking mid 2000s. And then I've talked to MSBA recently, is this week being emailed on this particular question. It just doesn't, it just doesn't. So, this may be an opportunity where we can talk to your colleagues and also MSBA, even when we go to fall conference, like even our superintendent doesn't like this. And believe me, they know it, or at least Phyllis Barker does and Kelly Hopkins does. So, I don't, you're not, you're not wanting that on each one.
Well, I, I think.
But this is a tough one.
Well, the purpose of the question is we need to make so on our CSEP that we just approved, there's student achievement. And we talk about when we're going to spiral our, our math curriculum or whatever. So, what I need to see now is that our professional development at the middle school specifically is teaching, is teaching the teachers how to spiral in the math department, how to spiral their curriculum. Because that's what we're, that's what our CSEP says, right? So, I think what the board needs to see is that the professional development is in lockstep with, with our goals and student achievement. I think that's what the question is trying to, is trying to ask.
So, I guess to, an artifact that a board member would review to validate this. And Dr. Berger, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're not reviewing PD reports that our staff members are taking, are we? We're not doing that.
And our, and I know Mr. Smith chomped a bit to chime in this because we've had a conversation over it too because it kind of compounds both of us. No, but I appreciate the question. You know, I'm, I'm very firm on PD plans are, individual PD plans are outside of the purview of the, you know, where the board should spend time because you're, you know, everybody has an expertise. I'm not, I don't think that's one of them. And you can have an exception. There could be a board member with one. But maybe I'm being too literal about this. Maybe if I step back from it, and I have not come to this until this moment, is just kind of like what you're seeing, seeing the validation in the CSEP, but also, you know, an artifact could be if you looked at the, help me Doug, the CSEP days and the Paul's days.
Well, we have, we have CSEP days at the administration plan and then we have PD days, the professional development.
Our P, our Paul's days have turned into CSEP days.
Yeah, so we have four days each year that, we have four days each year that are staff development days, two that are developed by the building and district administration around these CSEP plans specifically.
And by the way, I sit in some of those. So, for example, you know EL is a, is a priority in our district. What, what you would need to know to maybe check yes is, I wonder if on that day that the teachers take the day off to, I'd love to hear me say. teachers take the day off to, they'd love to hear me say that, and go to PD, is there an EL workshop that's involved in that? Let me tell you, there is, because I sat in it, you know? And so that might be a little validation, especially if you come back from MSBA or just collectively and say, you know, now I kind of have a better understanding of that. And then, you know, I think it's as simple as us to buy those artifacts at some, you know.
Yeah, we have, I mean, and the other thing, I mean, so every spring, the professional development committee sends a survey to all teachers, and it's called the needs assessment. And so the teachers in the district take this, and the committee looks at that needs assessment, and that drives their planning of their two days and their spending of professional development funds that they have. And so a lot of what we do at the CSET level, I fund out of Title II funds for professional development based on the CSET plan. So for example, you know, like right now, a lot of the data was showing, and I know that a lot of us went, you know, at MSBA last year too, and stuff on like all of the evidence-based work. You know, our middle school now is going to evidence-based for this year, starting this year. Well, we have a pretty large expenditure of funds going to train all of our middle school staff. We sent middle school, we're sending administrators from the district to get trained on that upfront, and then we are bringing in a group to do training on that on our first CSET day this year. So the things that we put in our plans or that we think are going to drive instruction, we fund. I mean, all of our impact teamwork, we spent, I mean, a considerable amount of funds on.
Okay, so what you just said there was, we evaluate professional development once a year, right? I mean, there's on our calendar somewhere, there's a professional development evaluation. What you should do.
I don't think there was an evaluation for PD, but.
I thought there was.
I didn't think there was. I just looked at it, I know Elizabeth sent it to me. I didn't look at it for that reason.
Okay, well, but then maybe there should be, and that's where you articulate all this stuff, that should answer this question.
That's not, that's not bad. I mean, especially if, particularly if the board is set on having this question.
And I know that it has been a concern with our teachers in prior years, so I actually think that's a lucky idea. Sorry for the extra work.
I had heard complaints, well, that didn't even concern me, so why did I have to go to that? But in the later year, the last four, five years, or three or four years, I'd say, I have, I've heard good things about the PD, so I'm hearing really good things that, yeah, this, now we're getting relevant on what we need to be seeing. So that's, you know, I'm just picking it up from talking to different people.
I think we made a concerted effort in the jet to bring more PD in that affects everyone, and then send people out, and then somebody goes and gets something and comes back and presents it.
So two things I want to close, the Berger part of this whole agenda item with, because this, Mr. Jones does not want me to rebut each one of my know-it-isms, is Doug said a considerable amount of funds, remember that's reallocated funds, so those weren't new funds, I want to clarify that, and the second was just that. I'm going to, I'm going to provide input if you solicit it, but I know this could be potentially a long agenda item, and I don't want to bog you down by me and Doug defending every question.
So I think the action item is a PD evaluation where it answers this question.
Now, wait a minute, though. I'm sorry, I was the person that agreed. And just from sitting here at the board meetings, hearing Doug and Chris talk about the PD days that we have currently, I don't feel we need another report. I mean, I was able to click agree with confidence that they are taking care of that. I mean, do we need to micromanage? Do we need to get in the weeds on every report? I mean, we all have day jobs, we're not administrators, I'm not. You know, I think that's why we pay Chris to do his job. And I think maybe when you start, if maybe you're not pat-trusting him that he's doing his job, then you're going to start asking for these reports. I'm okay with, with the way it was, because I was able to hit agree with no second thought.
And I was able to hit agree too.
That it's not being taken care of. That's my personal opinion.
So then what I'm hearing you say is, if an individual board member has an issue, they should just set up some extra time with Doug and/or Chris and then get their, get comfortable with it, and that's what I'm hearing you say.
Me personally, I mean, maybe you want to take a vote on it to see if you want to have a report annually. I don't know, but as far as me, I don't think we need one.
My opinion is that this is an in-the-weeds question, but I'm going to save my comments on the questions for the end.
Well, I'm going to bring that up at the end, don't worry about it.
Okay.
That'd be part of the discussion. Okay. All right, we're done with number 12, unless you all want to vote on a.
I couldn't agree with Dave anymore. At a minimum.
All right, so let's say if you want to have something, to get you to agree, if you need to have a conversation with Chris or Doug, the board member's responsible for doing that. Okay. 13, only 13 up, please. Okay, so I think I disagreed with this one, because what I don't see is all the board members getting professional development.
At the time of the survey?
Yeah, I have a real problem with the timing of this survey. As I was going through it, it just.
The survey happened, and, you know, well, here's what I see, and I'm just going to be blunt. Typically, in the June conference, Mary and I are the only ones that go consistently to get our professional development. Nobody else goes. And then that's consistent. Now, I get we all have jobs, we all have everything like that, but year over year, you see two board members that are getting, and by the way, it's the two most senior board members, I have 266 stupid hours, if something's too light of continuing education, it's like, you know, you all, we all need to step it up.
There's so many other opportunities where we get professional development. Maybe June doesn't work for everybody. I know November doesn't work for Dave, but you know, I agree that people need to get professional development, but I racked up some hours too.
I know.
So to judge people for not going in June, I'm in a problem with that.
Well, that was an example, and that's fair, but.
And in fact, too, you have two members that haven't even had the opportunity to get professional development.
Well, I know, but they're going to do theirs in November, you know, and I get that, but year over year, what this thing is, we just need to, I think that this board could do a better job doing in general.
I think the majority of the board goes into, in the November one, and so to me, the majority went, so I was like, yes, I agree, because the majority went, they got the professional development.
All right, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe I'm wrong.
I think this would be a good question to see the change from now to next year, especially with Beth.
Unless we have two brand-new board members, then you're going to have the same issue because the timing is bad on this, guys.
Well, I mean, it's when we do it.
Well, we might need to discuss changes.
Well, we can discuss that at the end of the discussion. Okay. So two things we want to discuss is the percentage of the questions and the time. All right, question 17. So do we all, do we all agree with this? I mean, we all okay with this? So we don't really need discussing further? Okay. I'm assuming the two neither agree or disagree was Kyle and Beth, because they're just new board members?
Yeah, and I, yeah, that's correct for me, and I knew that we looked at some compensation. I didn't know if board members received copies of the benefits package to know what's there.
Okay. So basically, now the benefit package is basically, you know, we pay for the employee, 100% of the employee's insurance, and then we pay into the retirement plan. I mean, that's essentially the benefit package, right?
Yes.
And then the days off.
Yeah, healthy, that's right, yep, your leave time.
I answered yes to this.
And it's fairly comparable across, but yes, that's right, but there would be no problem with this, I mean, as an informational piece, to see maybe if that's where we're getting, you know.
Well, the good news is, this is part of the CSET now. This question's part of the CSET. So, you know, it's now, it's going to be, that's all I wanted to say about that. Okay, question 20, anything else on 21? Okay, hopefully after tonight's board meeting, you might have either agreed or disagreed, we're moving them up to agree, and we're moving on down the road. Because that would happen to be on the agenda tonight, so for those of you who neither agree nor disagree, is what we did tonight, what you need to do to agree?
It is for me, I hadn't walked through that process, yeah.
Okay, that's good, so, okay.
I'm good.
And then whoever else, you don't have to answer, but hopefully next year, based upon what we got tonight, you should be able to agree then.
I think my takeaway, so far, is that you probably saved our results.
You digress. Okay, next one I had on was 29. Okay, I'm the one that disagreed, and there's a lot of neither agree or disagree on this one, so the majority of the board could not agree to this one. So, so Doug, 29, Doug, you want to kind of go through your answer here, please?
Well, I said, you know, is that any student who is in our elementary schools who is in any way seeing an interventionist for reading or math, a part of those interventions is at-home or sent-home work and information to parents. With the new literacy bill that was passed through the state, students who are in that boat now, or at-risk readers will be assigned a reading success plan, and that has to be signed up with the parent, and part of that law is this stuff's going to be sent home, and that is reflected in our CSET plan, where we are going to do reading success plans. So when you look at that as part of the district's strategic plan as in regard to raising parent awareness of that, that's pretty explicit in the reading success plans following the new literacy bill that's in the new CSET. So we were probably informally doing that prior, just through our interventions at the elementary school, but now it's going to just be as part of law, the new CSET and part of the new law.
I appreciate your answer you gave me, because obviously I didn't know, so I disagreed. So, does anybody have any other questions on 29? Okay, question 30. Again, I'm the one that disagreed on this one. The board act to continue our in-programmes. So you remember, and I'll tell you why I disagreed with this one. So remember when Chris Gaines came here, and we all don't remember, but I do, so rock, paper, scissors? So, you know, he identified our rocks, he documented everything we did, and then based upon our rocks, and the only thing we did, he scissored away everything we don't do. I think where our, what I want to say in this particular, what our board has, what the district has done in general, in my opinion, is we've gotten back to a point where we're adding things, adding things, adding things, but we're not taking things away that don't work.
I want to disagree slightly, because I have heard Dr. Berger say in multiple board meetings, we're not doing that anymore, it didn't work, more than I've heard it said by Dr. Buck. So I just disagree.
Okay. So is my perception wrong?
I think you're wrong, Austin.
All right, that's fair.
But, you know, or did you?
I want you.
I talk.
You can talk now.
You know, we, there certainly has been, what we've talked about is making sure that if something comes on the plate, trying to take something off the plate, and I'm not sure we're always successful in doing that, especially when performance is not where we need to be. So I think you could easily get a perception that there is more, in fact, it's beyond perception, you know, the superintendent, my colleagues in the room, and absolutely, you know, through mid-management and the teachers, I make no bones about it that there has been more pressure, you know, placed on academic achievement than there has been previously, and Doug's led out those efforts, and I think we've seen the results of that. Kind of a message that we, with intention, went to our buildings with late in the year was, the head, and you know, this is, well, you know, this is a slippery slope, but the message was, the heavy lift is over, because where we were with academic performance was not, we were not proud of. Where we are now, we're proud of, and of course, this board says, okay, what are you going to do moving forward? So kind of a part of that message was, you know, we can have a step back, that's okay, especially if there's a reason, but in a, you know, say, a two- or three-year trend, probably three-year trend, we need to see forward, you know, moving up. So I kind of conflated this question to, you know, almost like to what you did in that, you know, is there a lot on our people and on our system? Yes. I'm not sure it was more, because I don't think we brought in initiatives. I think what we're trying to message is, you know, we don't bring in a lot of outside experts. Our experts are already in-house, and those experts share through impact teams, and I've talked about that, but I think, you know, I think overall, there's been more pressure, you know? So hopefully, we can take our foot off the gas a little bit, which is almost, you know, not the right thing to say or not the right thing to hear, but I also can't hide from the fact that, you know, we did that in a global pandemic. We did that during AMI, and we knew it, and I told the board, I said, I thought we were going to capitalize on this opportunity in that everybody else is trying to just keep the doors open and babysit. This is the optimal time for us to not only keep the doors open, but we ain't babysitting. Our kids have got to learn, and I think we've been successful in that in our APR, and you know, I think what we're going to see in whenever Doug presents some new EOC and MAP data, you know, in the upcoming months, so sorry for the long answer, that was kind of my take on it, but.
Well, didn't I read in the exit survey comments that, you know, or that a lot of the reason, didn't people feel like they were just doing too much testing, and they were doing more and more?
A couple of them did, yeah.
And I'll speak to that just for a little, we're revisiting that, in men retreat, Doug's going to leave that out, is, you know, you do have to monitor and test. When you are doing well, there are opportunities to relieve the monitoring a little bit, because now you know what you're doing. And he's going to make, principals make their case for that, so.
We are way in the weeds on that, but.
No, we're excited about those opportunities, and then, of course, I also brought to the attention of the board that, you know, program evaluations, I know lots of those are very automatic, auto, you know, food service, you know, we're going to evaluate that, see for something, and there was good discussion that came out of food service, but it's never at risk of being clipped, but I think we do have programs that we are evaluating to say, if that is not effective, we can't do it. Where can we reallocate those resources? And I gave you some examples of those, so.
So I want to stay on this for a little bit more. So the question is, does the board act to continue our in-programmes based on the results of measured program effectiveness? So do we have a master tracker of programs and how we are grading them?
Program evaluations, we've got a list. It really came out of the IMSIP process and, you know, outstanding schools act through the IMSIP cycles. They no longer require us to provide that as an artifact, because it's pretty much institutionalized across states in Missouri. Yeah, we have program evaluation, and we've talked, I can't recall, I think it was the new program evaluation that we added this time, I'm hoping, Darkway, was it, did we make after-school programming a program evaluation? Yeah, so that was one that was just out there, but we weren't evaluating, you know, so we wanted to make that a program evaluation to track effectiveness of that program and bring that to the board. Because, you know, with the partnership with Boys and Girls Club of America, we don't have a lot of skin in that game, but previous to that, we did. You know, there were some dollars allocated to that, and we've just got to get more bang, we've got to get bang for our buck, and we can't do it now. It's probably changed a little bit with, we've got a lot less dollars in it with that partnership, which was incredible. Mary, one of our patrons, kind of let, you know, put us on that, so appreciate that.
And I'll just, with your response to that, I mean, and we're going to talk to the end, again, is this another one that is appropriate to be on the survey?
We'll get that in a second, give them that a second. Okay, that was the last of the ones I identified. Did anybody else identify any other questions they would like to talk about? Okay. I'm hearing nothing. So next question is, so last time, the last board, I think there was a committee of three board members who went through and basically took the entire list of questions. Heidi was one, I don't.
Michael was one, but there was like 100 and some odd questions.
And you all wrote it down. So I got, I got some feedback from certain board members sitting next to you that this is still too long.
I'm okay with that, I don't disagree, but going from 100 something to what we went to, we felt good about it, so I'm happy to look at it.
Okay, so.
Happy.
So the question to the board is, do we want to put a committee, and again, go back to the list of 100 questions or whatever, and then you want to, you all want to get together again and try to, you know, redo what questions we're asking ourselves?
I can get behind that. I think it needs to be a committee of probably new and old board members, because back to the same thing, I just, I hesitate, you don't know what you don't know.
Right.
And unfortunately, in a couple of months, they don't know. So to put a committee together now, if that's what Kyle's worried about, is that our best place plan? I don't know.
Well, the good thing about going against it is, obviously, now we're building up, you know, history because the questions are the same. And that was one of the reasons that we want to do the same questions over and over again. And again, and so the question to the, and so, and Kyle said to me something about, well, maybe we can still keep the association or whatever, or how you re, you know, revamp this a little bit. But the question to the board is, do you want to put a board committee together, three board members, and have them go through it and pick the questions out again for a final approval? So that's the question to the board.
I would love for the board to review this. And now that I know that Heidi was on the first committee, I think it'd be very impactful if she was on this proposed second committee to bring her experience and her memory from how this got reduced the first time. But I think, I think there's a great opportunity here. And I know that there's concern of, you know, losing the comparisons of year over year, but there may be an opportunity to identify potentially similar questions, consolidating them down to one, and then using an average of those previous questions as a comparison for next year. What do you think, Beth?
I think it's a good idea to review it. I think, I agree, it makes sense for Heidi to be there with the historical knowledge. I know Kyle wants to do it. If we think it makes sense, I would be glad to volunteer. But if we think it makes sense to have another more senior board member sit in as the third person, I'm fine with that.
Actually, I think it'd be great for you to be on it. That way, we can talk about the things that you guys still question and when you might have opportunities to learn about those things. I actually love that. Everybody else doesn't mind.
Mary, what's your thought?
Well, I didn't think, well, I was back in the day when you had all the 100 questions. But so I thought this went very well, and, you know, if you're in a hurry, you don't have to make a comment on all, as you see, everyone didn't. So, but, you know, the comment part is the only part that takes a long time because you have to really think, now, what, how can I justify my answer, you know? And so, anyway, sure, you know, I don't think it hurts to go through it and look at it again and see what.
We can always turn it down.
Right, right.
Dave, what do you think?
It, I mean, it could probably be revisited. I don't, I don't see many problems with it. It is way better than 100 question one or whatever it was.
I would have 40 something. It was ridiculous.
It was.
Yeah, so if they want to re-review it, that's one I'd be.
All right, so what I'm hearing, we have a board committee of Heidi, Kyle, and Beth. They're going to review the questions, and then when we, and you'll have that done in four months?
We can do that.
Okay. Next question I heard tonight was, we need a vote on that?
You're good. There's no, no. Okay. And so, and you're welcome to use this board room, or I or your own, just Elizabeth. No one will beat you up.
Okay. So there'll be three board members. Next question is, to Heidi's point, the timing of the survey probably wasn't the best due to the fact we had new board members. So based upon that, when would you propose that we take the evaluation, Heidi?
Unfortunately, when I think it's reasonable, we're so stupid busy in December, January, that it makes no sense. So do we do it in February before the new next board is elected in? Or March? That's my only thought process. I just, you have not given new board members any time to learn.
What about October? It's at six months.
I don't know that that's enough because you haven't done your first opportunity for board professional development at that point. And you know how much we learn at those events.
Okay, so.
I agree with March or February.
I like March or February because November, December gets sketched with what you're doing for the end-of-the-year stuff.
All right, so.
And superintendative.
Superintendative evaluation is huge.
So my, I guess the only comment I'd make to that is, you're probably going to have the other end of the spectrum issue. Oh, well, we had the, the board had this survey, and well, there was four board members on it, so it's.
But it's before they are either elected.
Okay, so here's what we're going to do. Heard this conversation a lot. Heidi, Kyle, and Beth, as they're reviewing the actions, are going to make a recommendation as to when.
March.
When the evaluation should be done.
Okay.
Fair enough?
Perfect. On board.
All right. Sorry to cut you off there, everybody.
No, that's perfect. Thank you.
All right. Anything else on board self-evaluation that we want to talk about? Okay. I'm just full of controversial stuff tonight. The next item was agenda format. So now that we have new board members, so, and plus we've got new CSET now, so these board goals that our current agenda is doing no longer matches our CSET one-to-one. So the idea is this is the perfect time to look at how we want to do an agenda. Now, Erin told me in an email that she liked the fact that the agenda was set up in a goal-oriented map, so that she just told me that. And so when Chris and I talked about this the other day, you know, I think the administration came up with this idea of that going back to a more traditional format. And then when Chris and I were talking the other day, in order to appease Erin's need to talk about, make sure we're talking about the right things, that for each agenda item, if it matches up to a CSET item, then it gets highlighted that it's part of the CSET. So you can see tonight, and this was our agenda as it would have been tonight if we'd gone to a more traditional format. And you can see on the left is the agenda, and on the right is how it would be, you know, we identified CSET things. Now, I'm going to, you know, insist that when we're talking about budget, that's a very important thing for boards to do, that that gets called out. And then Paul sees, I'm going to talk about that too, but.
And Mr. Jones, the only thing I'd add to that is, on the agenda to the right, I think, I hope, oh, I, oh, maybe I didn't, but I did cheat in a couple of agenda items that were not on the agenda just to give you the flavor of where they would attach to the board, the CSET focus. So I think like, for example, the summer school pay, obviously, we're not doing that tonight. But I just, we, Mr. Jones and I went back to like April or something and just said, let's look at April's. And then, so I went ahead and cheated those over just to get, because part of the conversation that Mr. Jones and I had, he said, man, July, we're not very focused on our focus areas. And we had, we never, this conversation didn't conclude, but some of the things that I remembered were, well, July is not by calendar the things. We had a big focus on some of those things. And you are going to have things on the agenda that don't hit the focus area. It's not about this every, all 12 meetings have a touch on the focus area. They probably will, or all four focus areas. But at the end of the year, can you evaluate where your focus, your overall focus was? So what is that threshold? I don't know. I think we could probably collectively come up with that pretty easily. Are half of our agenda items connected to it? Or, you know, maybe that's reasonable.
Well, I would say board evaluation is MSEP 6. Because, because MSEP 6, and so we should identify MSEP on there.
Yeah.
Because, you know, at the end of the day, we're judged, which would be academic performance, because at the end of the day, that's part of our scorecard.
Yeah.
I like this. I actually have no opinions about this, as long as we don't lose the focus. And I do want to star it and make it a focus because when I get ready to do your evaluation in December, I am digging through everything, right? Because I cannot remember what we discussed over 12 months.
Right.
So having that marked focus on there would definitely help me because we have definitely had focus areas.
Yeah.
And I just don't want to lose sight of our focus areas. As for how it's set up, I have zero opinions, as long as we're not going to lose sight.
Kyle?
I am very agnostic to either of the two agendas.
Or the original, right. I mean, no, we're.
Yeah.
If we change.
I do, I do like Heidi's comment of, you know, it makes it easy to ensure that the focus is maintained throughout the whole year of agenda conversation, if we're, if we're identifying them in the agenda.
If it doesn't have focus, it doesn't. But the stuff that does and fits somewhere, let's please star.
Yeah.
Denote it somehow. I'm not going to lose any sleep on what we're.
No. Dave?
Yeah, it makes me no difference.
Mary?
I agree with Heidi because when I do my evaluation, I too go back through the whole year of agendas and minutes. And, you know, that's where I, because I might be saying this for the benefit of the new board members, but are even older board members. It's too easy to place your evaluation on what happened at your current, at your last board meeting. Oh, I was so mad.
We're so happy.
My evaluation is tonight.
No, well, I do go back and look at, look at the minutes. I look at the agendas and any other correspondence that we have, they'll say, to do my evaluation. So, you know, I like that you're putting that, but I could do that with the old ones or the current ones too. So it does, I don't really have an opinion. I don't care.
Well, Elizabeth, can I quote you real quick?
Okay.
So I think Chris told me, Elizabeth, the other, keeps asking questions on the current agenda format, where does this go? Where does this go? And a lot of times, you know, Dr. Berger tells her, well, I don't know. Just put it somewhere.
It could hit multiple focuses.
Yeah.
A lot of things do.
Yeah, okay.
And I have trouble with, when I look at the history, they're in different orders as well.
They are, I've noticed that.
And that bothers me, so I would like to nail that down.
Beth, what's your thought?
I agree with everything that Heidi and Mary have said, and I'm comfortable with what we have presented here.
Mr. Jones, it sounds like the traditional, traditional one's not going to fly. Is it, is it, and you were probably, hopefully, not going to be punished, I apologize. But is it then that you would be okay with the one on the, in the right-hand side and just making sure that we stay focused and we're trying to make that connection, and we can drift away from the one that we used tonight? Is that, I was needing that clarification because I was hearing, because I tell you what, and for those of you that say it's six or half a dozen, that's kind of, sort of what we would come to, although we thought if there's an opportunity here to improve it, let's do it. Because Mr. Jones and I have been talking about this for three years.
Well, that's ridiculous.
Well, because when you're the new superintendent that comes in and you look at our agenda, you go, what?
Are you people doing it?
Yeah, because it just looks very different. And so I think pulling it to a little more, it has a little more traditional, you know, piece to it. But yet, and I can tell you, I didn't know what this was. I thought this was a week-long workshop with the board, that you guys did something funky with your, you know, and just didn't know. And then whenever I asked, Dave, Dave kind of helped, Dr. Buck kind of helped inform me of that. But I think anybody coming in, or if you, you know, were a patron, you can look at that traditional format on the right-hand column, and it looks like the city's agenda, or it looks like, and it looks like other school districts. And yet, and then I see this, I would have the question if I was just a complete layperson, maybe Sarah coming in that going, why is that highlighted? And that's real easy. That is our, that is our strategic plan focus. Every time we talk about it, we denote it.
I would like us to denote MSEP 6, just because, you know, at the end of the day, that's our scorecard. So at board evaluation, because again, our agenda should be all about the kids.
Well, maybe you and Erin and Dr. Berger can discuss what should be the notations? What eight things are we going to say?
Well, no, I think it's the four, CSEP, MSEP 6, and then budget.
And budget. Okay.
Because, because think about it, the budget is a very important document that we're responsible for.
Now, let's start, not to forget, Delwyn is that, let me think here. So you're going to, like, academic performance is always going to be MSEP 6, and.
So board of evaluation.
College and career readiness is always going to be MSEP 6, and it's one of our focus areas. So it's really just the teacher, the staff recruitment, retention that help guys, my colleagues, that's nothing attached to MSEP 6 that I can think of. I mean, indirectly through the CSEP and not. And then public engagement is MSEP 6 too. It is. So there's three of those, you know, you're saying denote, three of those are going to, they're baked in.
Yeah.
It may, I'm saying it may not be, you know, you can assume those three are firmly tied in MSEP 6. If that weren't.
If we don't like what he denotes in the first couple of months, there's enough experience and thought process here. We can say, wait a minute.
All right. But I'm just, go ahead.
Don't you think this is just going to be a lot of trekking down for Elizabeth to see what category this is going to fall under? When at the end of the day, my personal opinion, every subject that we have or every agenda item that we have, I'm hoping is to improve our school, improve our kids. I don't need a yellow highlighted reminder to remind me that this is the school improvement plan. You know, I think every decision we make here as a board is to improve the school. I don't know that a yellow highlight is going to.
I just don't want.
Make me change my mind.
I think what Erin wants, and she doesn't want us drifting. And so the fact of the matter, because month over month, if we see less and less of that yellow or whatever on there, then that's, then that's an indication we're drifting away from our primary mission, which is dedicated to student success. And so the idea behind it is, it's just a reminder to us all that whenever you, whenever you put an agenda, like, you call me, you want to put an agenda item on there. You know, we need to make sure it's, you know, that it's the right focus.
So then if I call you with an agenda item that doesn't meet the CSEP, are we not going to be able to put it on?
No, you can put it on there.
But, but so that doesn't change a thing?
Dave, let me, let me throw this at you, and I think it'll tie in. So in, over this three years, whenever, I'm not telling you, Austin, I talked about it every month. I think I even talked to Kyle during orientation, and maybe Kyle, like, maybe this was three or four times we talked about it, kind of like, I think maybe Beth and I visited about that too because it was coming up on this agenda item. The speculation of my coming in and seeing that was that that was created when the board was in trouble, that maybe the board was talking about things that probably are outside the purview of the board and weren't the administration's. That was my guess at it, but I didn't, I didn't know for sure. I didn't get that confirmed necessarily from Dave, Dr. Buck. I don't, I've never talked to Chris about that. So I appreciate absolutely what you're saying, Dave, that everything we do touches the kids. Now, some of it's more directly. But what I do like about that and why I kind of, you know, was okay with the way we did things, obviously, it doesn't matter if I'm okay or not, it's the board's agenda. But why I like a little of that flavor is, you know, what I've been talking about, why did we change those principal reports to CSEP reports? To make sure that we do 100 things. We feed kids, we transport them. Our goal is to get them college and career ready, right? MSEP. So this still denotes that, that where is our focus? So it's, to me, it's almost like a scorecard at the end of the year, which is what I kind of hear Heidi and Mary say is, as long, you know, we, as long as we're not the bureaucracy that's just keeping status quo, I used with Mrs. Dean earlier, you know, that's real easy to do. We got to be somewhat focused on the strategic plan, the continuous school improvement plan. And I have no problems with any of those. I truly don't. I'm kind of like you, agnostic to it. Although if you maybe say, what do you like or not? I like the one on the right because it gives me that traditional format. But yet, I can take a score at the end of the year to say, is this the appropriate? Do we have the right focus? You know? That, that's my take on it, for what it's worth. And clearly, that opinion is lower than the board's because whose agenda is it? It's the board's.
For six of us that don't really care, we've talked about this a lot.
Boy, have you.
Agenda format with people that would not be highlighted, and we'd go, what were we doing?
Okay. So going forward, what's on the right?
Perfect.
Everybody okay? Give it a try, if you like it?
Yep.
Monitor and adjust. All right, moving on. Advocacy positions. All right, moving on, advocacy positions. All right, we're not gonna go through the whole book.
It's long.
But what we are gonna do is, I put in the email, two things I would like to talk about, and then we'll go down the road, and whoever wants to talk about anything else. So you wanna pull up, um, um, the book, and then go to advocacy, uh, finance, A dot ten? And then make a figure for my own, please.
Say yes.
Right there, A dot ten, right there. All right, so I would like to add recreational marijuana, um, to it, because they got alcohol and alcohol-related products, recreational marijuana and internet. So just add the word recreational marijuana, since they're, uh, you know, doing, uh, sin taxes, since we're talking about sin taxes anyway, might as well add recreational marijuana to it.
Shouldn't we get our part?
So thoughts?
All the monies that we can possibly get, yes.
So does anybody agree we can add, uh, we should make a proposal to add recreational marijuana?
I was gonna say, we're not adding it, we're just putting it out there with, for the.
Providing the rest of the delegates.
Yeah, it's a delegate to recommend.
You know, then they will vote on it.
Yes. And then our, basically, our, the purpose, and then we have to fill out a form, which Elizabeth, Dr. Berger, I can do later. But the purpose would be obviously that now that it's legal, we might as well, you know, you know, might as well just go ahead and, uh, you know.
Go after those.
Increase, I mean, they are increasing state rep, state revenues with it, and now that the county gets to do six percent or whatever, you know, we might as well, you know, on that sin tax. Anybody okay with that? Okay, the only other one I had was, uh, instruction P. Keep going, maybe that's not instruction.
Fourteen.
Page fourteen?
You, I don't have page numbers.
There you go. Go to P, go to P as in all. Let me know, P. Artificial intelligence. I don't know what to put in there, but we as educators had better start thinking about artificial intelligence.
There, uh, that is talked about a lot at MSBA meetings.
So I challenge you all.
Under, it's under the, um, C, um, CES, under the, um, you know, security.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, well, artificial, so what I challenge you all to do is go out there and create a chat GPT account. And say, write me a paper on what we did. And, and, and by the way, so we had, so we had a, Cigna has a, um, a, a technology, um, fair every year at, at the company. And we just finished it, and we had a, an individual from Microsoft come talk to us. And he made, he made the weirdest statement, artificial intelligence will lie to you. If it doesn't have the answer, it will lie to you. Because where we're using it is with drugs, like, in terms of, like, you know, given a condition or whatever, you know, with this, what drug would be useful for X condition? And then so you take artificial intelligence, run it through it, and by the way, th- these are the general ones, not, you know, not the, the targeted ones. But, so the idea is, but I could see, you could use artificial intelligence to help, teachers could help grade papers. Take a kid's essay, put it in there, out pops, you know, the grammar mistakes and everything else, they don't have to do it anymore. Artificial intelligence does the grading of papers. You know, and, and a student could create a chat GPT account. You know, now that we're going to, uh, evidence space, I think this is good for evidence space, because now they don't get credit for it in their homework anymore. But I could go out to chat GPT and say, write me an essay on, five hundred word essay on whatever, and it'll do it. You know, and then they can hand it in, you know, as their own work. And then, you know, so, but it's, it's common. I mean, I know, you know, I know we don't like it, but it's common. And, 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 you know, if you look at Bing on, like, Bing's search engine, it uses artificial intelligence. I mean, but I, I go, go create a GPT account and just try it. It's free, and just try it.
Yeah, I, I think it's something that should be on the radar, however, I'm making an assumption, I'm sure services like turnitin.com are already working on initiatives that would, um, be able to review documents suspected as been written by artificial intelligence or not. I would hope that that is, that there are companies out there that are already looking to, to nip that. What we're gonna have to review in the future is, at what point will we have to, you know, start subscribing to one of those services to, to mitigate that in the district?
Yeah, well, again, the, the thing is, it's, and I know, again, I have no idea what to propose. And maybe we propose nothing, because we don't know. But as I was thinking about this, artificial intelligence is gonna play a, I mean, you can, you can now, I, I've read where, where you can take a kid doing math, long math, give it to an engine, and it'll check how well he's doing the, the steps of the math or whatever. You know, think about that in instruction. If a teacher could take, you know, a kid handled something out, a long division program, a long division, he fed that image into, uh, artificial intelligence, and it picks out the kid's mistake a lot quicker than a teacher could. And then it's all the teacher has to do then is, I think I, didn't I send you an article on this? You did. And, and so he, so he and I kinda talked about it. I love this stuff. But, you know, the issue is, you know, that, you know, we need to, it, it could help support teachers a lot. I mean, at the same book.
Curriculum writing and everything, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, it, it's a lot, you know. But now, the, the other issue you got now, all the authors are gonna do these artificial intelligence companies, saying, hey, you can't use my book in your, uh, as, as part of your stuff you loaded in there. You know, now they're all, you know, they got all that conversation going on. But I don't know, I don't know if MSBA has, has, they, so from a security perspective, they're looking into artificial intelligence. But what they have, what they're not looking into is, um, from a instruction and curriculum perspective, which is what we need to, we need to do.
President, Mr. President, we just put a, a, a more general comment on that, that we, we think that AI, there may be a position of AI under instruction too, and would that be?
Yeah, I mean, we, I mean, at least get MSBA talking about it. I mean, don't do anything this year, but, but the, the board of directors and the advocacy teams need to start talking about it, need to start having conversations about it. That's, 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 those are the only two things from an advocacy pers- perspective that I wanted to talk about tonight. So, um, does anybody have anything else they wanna talk about?
I do. Uh, item Z, uh, one and two, and as a district, we may not want to say anything, but personally, for me, I just.
Okay, so hold on, so, under which section, instruction, personnel?
Page eighteen, Z.
Book nine. Select eleven, eleven.
It's under V, School Operations.
Z, Virtual Education.
There we go.
Again, this just might be me, but MSBA supporting virtual education options, I just, it says courses are rigorous. Virtual education has an option, especially for elementary school and middle school students. You're not selling it to me as a, as a viable option of instruction when compared to traditional, uh, education. And I, I interpret this as supporting full, one hundred percent virtual education in K twelve. And I just, I don't agree with, um, their support of that, but it could just be me not.
Well, so the mistake you're making, Kyle, is that there's a state law that requires virtual education to be out there. So what this is saying is that, you know, there's private companies and then the public school districts. So what this is saying is that we support, given the fact it's a state law, that you gotta have it, right? So the, the, the table stakes are virtual education's out there. And, and you have to, so we have to allow a kid to do it, give them certain rules or whatever, which is their own policy. But given that, but as long as the courses are provided by a Missouri public school district, then that's what they're supporting. What they're not supporting is the private citation of the virtual education options. Because that's where you're getting your for-profit companies coming in and trying to, you know, do that. Now, the second bullet there, you know, which addresses that, then it talks about, you know, okay, now they gotta be taught by Missouri certified teachers or qualified college professors. You know, that's, that's where you're getting your other entities, your private, you know, your for-profit companies. And then basically, um, the third one basically saying that, um, you know, we don't wanna accept or credit from virtual education providers that are not approved by the local school board. I mean, today we have to, I think we have to take them, but I don't think we want, but, so given the table stakes that we, that we have, that they're there, and, and we have to support them, I think this, this fits our needs well.
So with this position now, that means MSBA would oppose any state law, any, any bill introduced to overturn said state law on virtual education.
No, I don't, I, I think David don't think so, no.
I don't think so, but I, actually, your board director's over there, I don't think that would be their position, Mary, I'd probably.
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, okay.
I don't sit on the advocacy committee, but, uh, I have before, but I don't now, but, no, I, that's, that's not at all the way I think it is.
Anything else?
No.
I'm correct, thank you. Beth, did you have anything you wanna bring up?
I don't.
Okay, David?
No.
Heidi?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. So what I heard basically is we're just gonna write one for the recreational marijuana. And then, uh, the other one we're gonna do about just a, a general letter to the advocacy committee that they need to start thinking about artificial intelligence. That's the outcome of tonight's conversation.
As it relates to?
Instruction, as it relates to instruction.
Yeah, that's good.
Just security, because they're, they're really talking about the security.
Well, and, and again, my thing was instruction. Okay, so Elizabeth, you and I have to get together and, uh, write that on. And when's that, have to be turned in by?
September.
September fourth, so we got, we got some time. Okay, thank you for, um, listening to that. Okay, um, legal RFP, Dr. Berger. Yeah, throwing that to Dr. Way, who's pointing on this?
Oh, so we went out to bid for comprehensive legal services in late spring, and actually had a bid opening, um, May twenty-third, right before school was over. We were lucky enough to have four, very good, um, probably some of the best in the state of Missouri, um, give us documents for that bid process. It took us about a week or so to kinda go through all the paperwork, um, based off of that, that's when we started asking questions of all of them. Um, and then, um, I can tell you, it was very close, I, I believe, between two of them. And the recommendation that we were making, uh, to you this evening is, we would like to go with Ed Council, uh, for our comprehensive legal services, kinda moving forward. We'd like to sign a, a five-year agreement with them that will allow us to get out, obviously, in a year we would like to. But that's, that's what we wanna do moving forward. The only other thing I wanna advise you on is the pricing. I tried to do apples to apples. It's kinda hard to do pricing when it comes to legal services. Everything's kinda bid out differently, from paralegal to contract, to partners, to regular attorneys. And so I tried to give you the worst-case scenario in year one for everyone, and in year five for everyone.
Is there any discussion, any questions about the legal RFP? Okay, I need a motion to accept the head council proposal for comprehensive legal services.
Second.
Okay, go ahead, who paid, you had a question?
I assume our contract with, uh, our older term is, is up or due?
Yeah.
Yeah, we haven't been out to, kinda, to bid for a while, so.
Okay.
Perfect.
Sorry.
No, no, that's a good question, but thank you for, uh, asking. Okay, who, who made the motion again, please?
I did.
Who seconded?
I thought Dave made it, so I seconded it, so I'm just making the first motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, got that? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, uh, travel reimbursement for myself first, let's make that motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And all stands, stays. And now we need the same motion for Mary?
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Okay, you got that? Okay, uh, consent agenda, does anybody wanna pull anything?
We had the, the one.
The employment.
Well, I, I don't, well, Kyle said that the baby is not.
Let's go and do it just.
Forward, okay, so.
Just make sure.
Yeah, okay, so we're gonna pull Jacqueline Bagby out.
Very distant, right?
She's my second cousin's wife.
But what affinity, or whatever.
Okay, so in all seriousness, we're gonna pull employment, and then we'll do it, that one's the second. All right, anything else we pull on? Okay, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, sans item E, employment.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard six, zero. Employment. Uh, I need a motion to employ Jacqueline Bagby as the head school nurse.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Okay, now I need a motion to employ all the other individuals, Sam's, Jacqueline, Bagby.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Uh, six, zero.
Okay.
Now I need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Hold on, I gotta read it. Now it goes. In accordance with the provisions of six, ten, oh, twenty-one, the vice statutes of Missouri, the R two Board of Education will be in closed session in order to discuss six, ten, oh, twenty-one. Three, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by a public government body when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded. Thirteen, individually identifiable personnel records, performance rating, or records pertaining to employees or applications for employment. Now I need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? Will call, starting with Austin, yes?
Yes.
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 Yes.